May I have the clerk call the roll, please?
Mayor Marino.
Here.
Vice Mayor Woods.
Here.
Councilmember Marciano.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Litt.
Here.
Thank you. Any additions, deletions, or modifications?
No, ma'am.
Any announcements or presentations?
No, ma'am.
Items of residence -- wow, this is great. We're already on number five.
A journey.
Okay, we're done. Everybody go home. Those of you that had anything to do, we're not doing it. Okay. So, items of resident interest and board committee reports. I always start with Michelle. Today, I'll start with Carl.
Why did I know you were going to do that?
Because!
I knew that when I was home you were going to do that. Did I forego, like I always do?
You can do whatever you like.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm not going to talk about the meetings that we all go to. I know you guys will touch on that, and I appreciate it when you include me. What was different for me this month, and I don't know what it is, we get so many compliments about the council being accessible, and I have been called over and over and over the last couple months to speak in the neighborhoods. I think I've spoken one or two neighborhoods almost every week in the last month or so, and I'm actually booked through March to continue to speak even in people's homes who just have met one of us and have approached us and said, "Hey, will you come to my house? I would like to get the community over to meet you." So, other than the meetings, and we've done a lot of positive things in the last month, it's just I've had a nice community outreach because people want to be involved, and it's nice to have the community want to interact with the council. And that's the only interesting thing that I have to share, and you guys will go over the meeting, so I'll let you have it.
Okay. Mark?
Actually, it was relatively quiet in terms of the meetings for me this month. There's a little flu bug going around, et cetera, but I think there was a couple of highlights. The Public Safety Day was really great. A lot of people showed up. Thank you for everyone and to the staff who put that together. That was really a lot of fun. I kind of wish my kids were little again so we could have gone and actually played with some of the toys that were there, but we didn't. I didn't. Palm Beach North Chamber, I wanted to thank Todd and David for taking me around the district park. It's really going to be amazing, and just to see the camaraderie, the teamwork that the staff has put together was really amazing to see, and we're all going to be very proud when that park opens. Palm Beach North Chamber breakfast, NCNC workforce housing discussion, which we've had some other discussions with other members of the community, which has been good. The biggest highlight was the Miracle League exhibition game. I'm sure Maria will touch on that, but that was really heartwarming, and it was great to see, even though it rained, that our city was able to host it, and I hope we can do that more than the economic forum the other day, et cetera. So, that's all I got.
Okay. Matthew?
Okay. I attended the Chamber Government Affairs Committee, the Green Market Anniversary, Chamber Breakfast. We had Arbor Day, which was fun, Federation event at Mirasol, and two investitures of judges. So, it was a good month.
And before Michelle goes, for those of you that don't know, Michelle was the Community Leadership Award winner for the Ladies in Leadership for the Palm Beach Gardens Habad. And it was a wonderful ceremony, and you are a gracious winner. Your turn.
Every month, I try to, as well as go to things that are here within Palm Beach Gardens, get out of our area a little bit and take advantage of some of the learning opportunities in the county and other cities around, so my list reflects that a little bit. There was the Chamber's Government Affairs Meeting, Palm Beach Gardens Public Safety Day, which this year combined the fire and police departments, and it was phenomenal. I had a meeting with Jeremy McBrien, who is the Water Resources Manager for Palm Beach County. Chamber State of the County Breakfast with County Administrator Verdenia Baker, the City of Palm Beach Gardens, and the Women's Club of Palm Beach Gardens Arbor Day Celebration at Lake Catherine. Coman Race for the Cure. There were sign-ups and packet handouts at the Palm Beach Gardens Mall. And the Palm Beach County Human Rights Council Winter Event, they were the same day. Leadership Palm Beach County Day at the South Florida Fair, and I got to watch Mayor Marino in her cowboy hat and chaps participate in the Mayor's Parade. It was an awesome day at the fair. Martin Luther King Memorial Breakfast at the Convention Center. The NCNC North County Neighborhood Coalition Meeting with City/County Commissioner Hal Valashay and Assistant County Administrator Fay Johnson and Patrick Butler. They discussed the county's workforce housing program, and there was Dr. Coleman Farrell, the Provost of Palm Beach State College. Palm Beach Gardens campus spoke as well. The League of Cities Annual Meeting was at the Wellington Equestrian Center. West Palm Beach Mayor Jerry Moyau gave her last State of the City address at the Convention Center. And Palm Beach County Water Task Force Meeting, of which I am an appointee, also met that day. The 26th, there was the Race for the Cure, and the Palm Beach County Miracle League Baseball Game at Gardens Park, which we will hear more about. On the 31st, the Legislative Delegation of Palm Beach County send-off to Tallahassee. It was a joint event of the North and South County Jewish Federations, and we sent our legislators from the county off to Tallahassee to work for us. As Maria mentioned, I was honored to receive the Community Leadership Award from the Ladies in Leadership Initiative of Habad. There were 160 women from the Palm Beach Gardens area who came out that morning, and it was really lovely. Melanoma Foundation fundraiser at The Breakers, and Maria was the emcee for that, so that was fun. And on the 5th was the Reproductive Rights Coalition Panel Discussion on the Future of Individual Liberties and Reproductive Rights Under the New State and Federal Courts.
Thank you. I think we all -- well, I had a busy month, and Mark always picks on me. He says my typing is too big. I made it smaller so it all fit on one page. But I have to do a huge shout-out to Public Safety Day because not only was it a collaboration between our police and fire departments, they brought in agencies statewide, and it was just amazing to see. I mean, we had Fish and Wildlife, we had Florida Highway Patrol, we had sheriffs, we had canine -- yes, we had the sheriff's helicopter, but you know what? We don't need to purchase one because we can use the sheriffs. So, we can save money in our budget on that. But it was, for those that came out, thank you very much. It was a glorious day, and it really shows how much of a partnership the City of Palm Beach Gardens staff has with each other, that they did this all. We had nothing to do with it. It was all police and fire, and they brought a lot of people together, a lot of resources together to really show the public what we do best here, and that's take care of our residents with the services that we provide. Going down the list, yes, the 17th Anniversary of the Green Market. That was very wonderful, and I'd like to thank the Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center as they are a sponsor. And for those of you that haven't seen it, the Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center calendar, and I would like to thank our Fire Rescue Department for being the models for this poster, for this calendar. I think that's fabulous, and if you haven't got yours, I'm sure there's a way to get one. Carl didn't touch on this, but he and I danced at the Bresky Bash, Dance for Justice. He was in the back, but you could see him because he was the tallest guy there. It was a lot of fun, and we were raising awareness, which is always good. State of the County with Verdenia Baker, Arbor Day. I was happy to be the lead speaker at the Prosperity Leadership Presentation here at the City of Palm Beach Gardens for Palm Beach North Chamber. When the Palm Beach North Chamber comes to the city and starts at the city and then goes to other locations, the comments that we get are that you all do it the best. You are the city that leads by example. So, we just keep getting kudos, and I just would like to pass that on to staff, and whoever's listening at home, we really do have an unbelievable staff. NCNC Meeting, League of Cities Board Meeting and Membership Meeting, Meet the Mayor at Prosperity Oaks, and with Mark, we watched the second pyramid go up on the Devasta Towers. That was pretty awesome to watch. So, we were actually up on the top of the parking deck, parking structure, and got a real bird's-eye view of what it looked like and just how big that pyramid is. It's quite large. Student Aces Kickball Tournament at Roger Dean. That was a lot of fun. As you heard, the Mayor's Parade at South Florida in conjunction with Leadership Palm Beach County Day at the fair. We had our kickoff meeting for the Smart and Connected Regions Task Force. The City of Palm Beach Gardens, along with the Palm Beach North Chamber, got a grant to actually continue working on ideas and ways to be smart and connected in the future, and we've brought in a lot of stakeholders from around the county to help us with that. So, we had our kickoff task force meeting, and that will keep you posted. Miracle League, I think that will be a presentation later on, so I will just say that our city staff went above and beyond to prepare the field for a miracle day. It was pouring rain before we got there. We had these children that were physically and mentally handicapped, that were having the opportunity to play baseball on our field, and it stopped raining. It drizzled a little bit. We did not call the event, and it was a wonderful day, and then the moment we were done, it started pouring rain. So, it truly was a miracle that day.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And who was pitching the ball?
Oh, I dragged a friend of mine along with me, so Johnny Bench was pitching, and we also had Tommy Hutton there. So, it was really a wonderful day. A wonderful day for the kids, I have to say, and for all of the people that were there, the spectators and the participants, and the PBG YAA kids and the parents, it really was a community event, and I hope that in the future we have more, and I'm sure we're going to try to do something else with the Miracle League. And Cory, seriously, you guys were fabulous. Staff was wonderful. Jupiter Inlet Lighthouse Reception, Transportation and Mobility in the Gardens Presentation to Leadership Palm Beach County Focus Class. Because I'm on so many boards for transportation, it seems to fall on my shoulder, which I absolutely love, but we are going to be the Jetsons someday, just not now. ESPN Radio Show kicking off the Honda Classic and Honda Classic Media Day at PGA National. Yesterday, met with Melissa McKinley and the rest of her district mayors to talk about issues in her district, including traffic on Northlake and Beeline Highway. So, it's out there. League of Cities District Luncheon, and as Michelle said, I was the emcee for the Melanoma Foundation Luncheon at The Breakers for I don't know how many. Were there 500 or so? Four or 500. Raising awareness for melanoma and a great cause. Another famous baseball player was there, along with Johnny Bench. So, Town Hall Meeting with Bobby Powell to discuss North County issues. Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation Workshop with the Board of County Commissioners, the School Board in the League of Cities with our Legislative Delegation was a very interesting afternoon. Actually, it was longer than an afternoon. But the big takeaways that we're trying to get across to our Legislative Delegation is, one, the attack on home rule. And for those of you that don't know what home rule is, home rule is the right for our municipality to govern ourselves, and it seems that the legislature constantly tries to attack our rights, and so they need to be reminded, and so we had very good representation from the League of Cities to do that. The opioid crisis was another topic, a big topic of concern, as was vacation rentals by owners. So, it's not that we're just talking about them here. We're talking about them countywide and statewide. And on that, I think I am done, except for what's going on in the future, which I think is good for everybody to know. February 8th is Daddy Daughter Date Night at Sand Hill Crane Golf Club. February 22nd, Palm Beach Gardens Adult Art Students Reception at the Burns Road Community Center. February 23rd, Recreation Baseball Season Opening at 8:00 AM Gardens Park. We also have our Health and Wellness Fair at the Burns Road Community Center. There will be an artist reception at Sand Hill Crane Golf Club on February 24th. That is also the day of the Health and Wellness Fair. And also the day of the Youth Orchestra of Palm Beach County presenting their Love Is in the Air in Veterans Plaza right here from 3:00 to 4:30. I hope you all will come. They are phenomenal. And last but not least, the Honda Classic. And we are the home of the Honda Classic, so please join us from February 25th to March 3rd, and pay to say it now, that is not last, not least. We will be having a Beeline Highway Public Workshop February 28th at Lakeside Center, and I have the flyer somewhere here. It will be at the Burns Road Center from open house at 6:00, presentation at 6:30 Thursday, February 28th, for those that are interested in what's going on at Beeline Highway. And with that, I will move to the next item on our agenda, which I believe is comments from the public. And I actually do have one card. Patricia Schroeder. Name and address for the record, please.
Patricia Schroeder. I'm actually at 1701 North Flagler Drive, and that's in West Palm Beach, Florida. This is regarding the 211 Proclamation that I'm honored to, will be receiving from you. I want to thank you for your support, Mayor Marino, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. February is a chance for 211 to spotlight its programming and service to the community. We've actually been in the community since 1971, so that's going into 47 years. It's a huge period of time, but we know that many, many more people need to know about this service. We average about 250 calls and contacts per day from people in need in the community, and it could be somebody that's looking for, maybe they have a mother with Alzheimer's or a child with a disability, or perhaps they're concerned about the growth and development of their children, or perhaps they have a teen that has a behavioral health issue, just any number of those things. With the federal workers having their struggles, we were doing what we could to get them to the different services that could best help them. And I also wanted to give a shout-out for your Public Safety Day. We had a spotlight on our Help Me Grow Program. We had the Books Blocks and Balls table activities, helping families to do the little screenings to see if their children are on track for growth and development, and we also have a behavioral health component with that as well. But the key thing that I really want to bring home is for our seniors. We do have an elder crisis outreach program, so struggling seniors in the community can call 211 and have short-term case management to help link them to valuable services, and then the spotlight on our Sunshine Daily Phone Calls to Seniors. We really want to get the word out to local seniors that are isolated, or it could be somebody that has a disability, for example, a veteran or someone else that is housebound that could receive that call. That call is life-saving, and you know, it's one of our feel-good programs. Because we are a blended service, we are a community helpline and a crisis hotline, it's nice to have that Sunshine Program to kind of take, you know, that's that feel-good piece as opposed to the heavier piece, which is the mental health piece. We're in the trenches with the calls every day. We average about 25 calls that are of mental health or suicidal concern. We do answer the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. We are the regional responder to that, so unfortunately, when we have celebrity suicide, we actually get an uptake in calls because that number is advertised throughout the nation. We also answer their National Crisis Chat, and a really interesting piece that we've just started doing is a disaster response, and this is a national initiative. For example, families that have struggled with hurricanes or the recent fires in California, they can call a specific number that's advertised by the National Crisis Line, and we pick it up in this area, and interestingly enough, I had a media crew in our center when we got a call from Paradise, California. So, we have people reaching out to us for that emotional support, and we will help them find services. But thank you so much. I think I just cleared the wire, and I'm grateful that you're here to support us with that proclamation.
Thank you for coming. Okay, next item. I have no more cards, so next item on the agenda would be the City Managers Report.
Just a couple of items to bring to council's attention. The FDOT public hearing that you mentioned earlier in your report, we did have some flyers that we produced and put on the table, if the public's interested, with all the information on it. In addition to that, I hope that you had an opportunity to observe the banner that was sent to us from the Bay County employees, part of our Sister City Program that we have employed, but not just Bay County, but the City of Callaway as well. After Hurricane Michael, our employees got together and found ways to help employees in both Bay County and Callaway. As a result, we've received a lot of letters, pictures. The Bay County employees sent us a banner. We put it up in the lobby with all their signatures and well wishes, and it was very heartwarming to receive the thank you from Bay County and Callaway employees. Along with that, as already been mentioned, we've had a couple of special programs that have been brought about and organized through our recreation staff, particularly within the community. We've started to emphasize how we can bring better services to the community of disabilities. So, this is an opportunity for the city to grow. It's an opportunity for the staff to grow and certainly to provide more opportunities for the disabled. And here tonight, I've asked Charlotte Przynski, our Leisure Services Administrator, to give you a brief overview. I know most of you saw these, but for the citizens and the members in the audience, just to see what this is all about. We're very proud of what our staff is doing in this area. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Charlotte Przynski, Leisure Services Administrator. As Ron indicated, I'm here tonight to tell you about some wonderful things that your staff is bringing to the community, different programs and initiatives to serve those people in our community with disabilities. One of the first ones I want to highlight is our new wheelchair tennis program at our tennis center. First night was two Thursday nights ago. Again, it was pouring rain, and through initiatives on our staff, they were able to take this first night and move it from the clay tennis courts because of the rain and actually move it to Russo Park, and it was held. We had about 10 participants, and I'd like to show you a video clip from the first night. I am going to tell you, when I click on this, there could be an ad because it's a YouTube, and every 20 minutes it keeps adding to it, so I will click out and back in if it happens.
Wheelchair tennis. Tennis played in a wheelchair. Exception being the players have the option of a second bounce. Other than that, the scoring's the same, the rules are the same. It is challenging. Mobility is a big factor. Quicker and faster you are in the chair, the better player chances are you're going to be.
So, how does somebody get started in wheelchair tennis?
Just show up.
Just come to one of the clinics. We'll work them in somehow. The players are very
helpful. They'll help them with their chairs, get a sport chair, fit them to the proper chair. We'll give them hit some balls and a little bit, just the initial.
So, it's a pretty amazing program, and all of that is through our staff initiative to make it happen, and I want to point out Wendy Tatum, who's the operations manager at tennis, and Andy Mole, they're actually back there, and they didn't know I was going to mention them. But it was purely on their own that they took this on. They applied for grants, got $2,500 in grant money from different organizations, one for a sport wheelchair that we have if someone needs, and then also for some shade on our hard tennis courts, and you see pictures there. That will allow us to grow those programs, not only at the tennis center where it's clay, which they can play on clay, but also to play on the hard courts. Also, through their own initiative, Wendy's attended a training session for people who teach wheelchair tennis, again, at no cost to the city because she sought a grant to do that. Then they went out and they found the best instructor in South Florida in Jim Tierney. He's a USPTA Wheelchair Certified Instructor. He was the gentleman you saw at the video. He has quite a following, and he was able to bring his students up that first night. But the program we're going to run is going to be every Tuesday, or second and fourth Thursday, children and then adults in the evening. First class is free. It's going to be $10 thereafter, and the clinic is basically mobility, stroke technique, strategy, and then some play. And then when I did this PowerPoint, I put in here that we hope to get future tournaments, but Wendy notified me late this afternoon that we already have our first tournament. There was a community here in Palm Beach County who decided not to host a tournament for wheelchair tennis, hard court, and they called us and said, "Would you like to do it?" And it's coming in March. It'll be at Russo Park. We're still working out the details, but again, Wendy and Andy and Bill McDermott, who you saw in the video, are very committed to this program, and they're going to make that happen. Next, we heard a little bit about it earlier. Onto another initiative. Every child deserves to play baseball. In partnership with PBG YAA, Miracle League of Palm Beach County, and staff, we hosted the very first exhibition game. In this picture, this was the opening ceremony, and right off the bat, the PBG YAA donated $3,500 to the Miracle League. That was from every sport division giving money, so there was a check presentation. And then also, as stated, we had a special appearance for the first pitch. Hall of Famer Johnny Bench and major leaguer Tommy Hutton came out, and they had so much fun, they never left. So, Johnny and the mayor and Tommy pitched pretty much the whole time. So, it was pretty neat. So, the Miracle League philosophy is that every child deserves a chance to play baseball, and they do this with a buddy system. And this day, each player was paired with a buddy, and you will see, probably the most moving part of this day was what you see in the picture on my right-hand side. Our boys' youth baseball team was trained and coached how to be a buddy, and during that day, they took it very seriously, and you can see in here, baseball player, Miracle League player, same here, same here, and same here. They really took their responsibility to heart, and it was very moving to watch. Another note about the picture here, this young lady who's crossing home plate. Julia, who runs the league, actually called me for this photo. She said, "On a very rare occasion does this young girl smile," and we captured it when she crossed home plate. So, it was pretty neat. So, in a true partnership, this day happened. PBG YAA, they were the organizers. They got donations and sponsored. They provided uniforms for not only their team, but the Miracle League team, everybody who was out there, our staff. I want to give kudos to Daniel Prado. He's right there. He held the initial meetings to entertain bringing this league to town. And then standing in front of him, Lindsay Marsh, who in the very first meeting stood up, raised her hand. We didn't have to ask her and said, "I want to champion this," and she did, and she was the key person to bring the PBG YAA and the Miracle League together, to make it happen. But really, there were some true heroes that got mentioned, but sometimes they don't. And it's our Parks Division staff, led by Cory Wiler, our Public Facilities Director. They worked tirelessly on Saturday morning to make this happen. Most people would have closed their fields, and we did not. Not only did they get it dry, but you can see in some of the pictures, they cut turf mats in areas that were soft so that the participants could play safely. And then, again, totally on their own, you'll see on this side, they painted the Miracle League logo on both sides of the field. So, if that wasn't enough to get you motivated, I'm going to play you a short video. It's about two minutes, but it'll really give you a sense of what happened that day. It's about two minutes, but it'll really give you a sense of what happened that day. Just to conclude, to tell you a few other things that we're doing also again at tennis. We have a love-serving autism program. We also have an adult autism tennis program, 10-week series. Jamie's Angels, serving children with disabilities. And wherever possible, incorporating anyone who wants to play in our regular programming. Our Aquatic Center, every year holds adaptive aquatic swim lessons. PBG YAA has led the way in top soccer. And then we have other partnerships. ARC, every year, we host one of their summer camps. So those people who take those services can actually stay in North County and not have to travel somewhere else. And then we just started hosting a basketball program for Special Olympics. So your staff totally doing this out of doing the right thing for the community. So it's a wonderful program and I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm sure everyone has questions. So Matthew, you came to the mic quickly.
Charlotte, there's a concept called Miracle Fields, and we're going to be building baseball fields. Is there any talk about installing Miracle Fields here?
We're starting to have those conversations between the Miracle Program and us. They are looking for a North County home. Again, they came to us because other communities in the area said no. And then Daniel heard that and reached out to them. So yes, conversation's happening about trying to find a way to get them here. They're at capacity in Delray Beach. So a lot of parents who are here in North County and in Martin County would love to come to a closer location. So yes, we're talking about it.
Good, because Ron and I talked about it about a year ago and I hope that we can do something like that.
Yep.
Thanks.
Cheryl?
I just wanted to say kudos to the staff. I wasn't leaning forward, I was going to stand up and applaud it.
I think it's great and I'd love to see us be able to provide this type of events regularly. You mentioned top soccer and you know, my boys are soccer and they've been buddies for the top soccer. And now they do that program, both in the fall and in the spring. And the number of children that come from Jupiter, Stewart for the top soccer, and the buddies are just amazing. The kids are just so patient with the children that have disabilities, I'm sure. And we talked to some of the parents about having to drive from here to Delray. And really, there's no reason for them to do that if we can't do it here. So we're going to have some great facilities and I hope we can add that to the repertoire here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Charlotte. Thank you, staff. All right, so we are on to our consent agenda. So, motion?
I'm going to pull...
Who wants to pull one?
Why are we pulling anything?
I'm going to pull E and I.
And I'm going to pull J and N.
I don't need to do anything else. Where are we pulling?
Okay, so may I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda minus items E, I, J, and M?
M?
M.
I'm sorry, N.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus those items.
Okay.
A second.
All righty. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we will start with E, which is a purchase award. Do we have a presentation?
For the record, Kumra, Purchasing and Contracts Director. With me is Alan Owens, our Finance Administrator. This project is an option to renew the agreement for investment advisory in management services. The city has an existing agreement with PFM that we executed several years ago. And this agreement will expire in March 31st of this year. The city has an option to renew the agreement for another five years. After consulting with the Finance Department and they reviewed the performance of the vendor, the decision was to exercise the option to renew. The city awarded this agreement in March 2014 after a competitive request of proposals. The fees that were renegotiated then are the same fees that we were paying for the next five years. So there's no increase at all in the price. These were the vendors who submitted last time. There were six vendors and PFM Asset Management was ranked by the selection committee as having the best proposal and the one that they ranked the highest. This company has provided service to the city for several years. They have a background of about 35 years in the financial investment services and they're highly regarded in the industry. This is the existing fee schedule that will still be the fee schedule for the next five years. So there's, again, there's no increase in the price to us. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Kumra. I'm guessing Matthew might have questions or...
I do.
Okay.
Kumra, over the last five years, approximately how much money has PFM managed for us on an annual basis?
All right, that's a question better addressed by the Finance Administrator.
Yes, sir. They manage two portfolios. One is what we call the core portfolio, which is consists of about $25 million right now. That's under their management. The other is a short-term portfolio. Currently, it's about $15 to $16 million.
And what's been their rate of return over the last five years?
Over the last five years, the total portfolio has exceeded the benchmark, the one- to three-year treasury that we use to benchmark the return. And it's about a 1% total return. Currently, though, the total market or total return on a cost basis is about 2.5%.
In terms of the other firms that we considered, what was their rate, average rate of return over the last five years?
I don't have those numbers in front of me, Councilman.
In terms of the criteria that you use to evaluate which firm to select to manage the city's investments, what were the criteria and why did you select PFM? And that's my last question, by the way.
That's containing the request of proposals. The city looked at, the selection committee looked at the history of the firm, their philosophy, the rates they were offering, and those were weighted. There was a score for each category. And based on those categories, all of the six proposals were rated and evaluated by the selection committee. And the PFM Asset Management was ranked as having the best combination of experience, philosophy, past performance, and pricing.
And qualifications, qualifications of their staff and personnel is also in there as well as the experience of the firm and dealing with the similar type of entities such as the city. I will say, they also offer ancillary services that have been very helpful in the past as far as analysis of banking RFPs. And also with the 2017 one-cent surtax bond, a $30 million bond, they're very helpful. We engage them as a financial advisor also in that process. Thank you very much.
Okay, any more discussion? May I have a... First and a second, no, we don't need a first and a second. All in favor?
No, you should do.
I do need a...
You need a motion.
All right, may I have a motion, please? No, we had a motion. May I have a...
I'll make a motion to accept item E on the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item I. May I have a staff presentation on item I, please?
Item I is another option to renew the contract for storm debris disposal services. And joining me is David Warees, our Committee Services Administrator and who also wears the cap of Emergency Services Director. This amendment will renew an expiring agreement to dispose of storm debris. The current contract includes FEMA terms and conditions, and we have to include those in order to get, to be able to qualify for reimbursements when we have a storm event. The current contract is expiring and we have to, we have the option to renew the contract for another five years. There are three contracts. There's one primary and two secondary. DRC Emergency Services is a primary contractor. Grubbs Emergency Services and Bergeron Emergency Services are joint second contractors. Grubbs and Bergeron offered on the original pricing, similar pricing in aggregate, but the city has the right, regardless of whoever we awarded to here, to in an emergency, award to whoever offered us the lowest price per cubic yard for the type of material to be disposed by any of the three contractors. So it gave us that flexibility. These are the three vendors, the vendors who submitted to the competitive invitation to bid. We're renewing with, I should say, one, one of the three contractors. And the reason for that is because DRC Emergency Services, when we contacted them about renewing the agreement, stated that they would renew at the existing pricing. Grubbs said they wouldn't, they declined the request to renew because they hadn't gotten any work over the last five years. And Bergeron Emergency Services raised their pricing by 100%. So the city declined. So this is to renew with DRC Emergency Services. These are the existing pricing, and you can see the comparison between DRC and Bergeron. DRC are again, holding their pricing for the next five years. And staff recommends approval.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Discussion?
I have some.
Okay.
If Matt hadn't pulled I, I would have pulled it as well. Storm debris disposal was one of the areas that the state legislature addressed last session. There were several bills put forward that would have prevented cities from contracting with storm disposal companies prior to things happening. And the mayor and I went to Tallahassee and that was one of the things we lobbied against. It's one of the reasons Palm Beach Gardens did such a great job at getting rid of the storm debris after Hurricane Irma was because we had these contracts in place. So I just wanted to bring that forward.
And just remember that we don't have to spend the money unless we have a storm. So it's not like there's...
Right, so requirements contracts. Unless we have a hurricane or some other emergency where we need to use the services, no funds are dispersed.
Any other questions? May I have a motion and a second, please?
I'll make a motion to move I.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Motion carries. May I have a presentation for item J?
Item J is a, is a design build of the Public Services Operations Center. What you have before you is a claim for a price increase. In 2017, the City Council approved a contract with Airens Companies for the design and construction of the new Public Services Operations Center. And that came about because we did a competitive request for proposals. As you know, the building is under constructed, under construction, and is scheduled to be completed later this year. So this is the site. The building is to the east of the municipal complex. These are some of the preliminary design, what it's supposed to look like outside, what it's supposed to look like inside. The claim you have before you is due to the federal government's decision to impose tariffs on certain imported materials that are integral to the construction of this building. The contractor met with us and we looked it over and the claims are justified based on the provisions in Article 8.4.1 of the agreement. The cost increases are on the following items: steel, concrete material, masonry, trench drains, grades, concrete, overhead doors, and steel stairs. The current contract amount is $5.2 million. That is the guaranteed maximum price. The claim amount is for $163,000, which will increase the new contract value for $5.3 million. Staff is recommending approval and this, this project is funded from the one-cent sales surtax capital projects budget. Any questions?
Thank you. Any more questions?
No, I just wanted to explain why I pulled this item. Because $163,425 is not chump change. It's a significant amount. And I think, community-wise, in general, people everywhere tend to live in a cocoon. And here in Palm Beach Gardens, we live in a beautiful city and we do a really good job at managing our expenses. But we can't be immune and forget about what's happening federally or at the state level. The state legislature is going to attack Home Rule again. The things that they do statewide, just as this, the tariffs federally, will have an impact locally. And we have to make our voices heard and I urge everybody to stay on top of things that will affect us here. It's not far away. It's not decisions being made there. These things affect us here locally and this is hitting our pocketbook pretty significantly. So, thank you, Kumra.
You're welcome.
Just an observation, and I believe this is a conversation between City Manager and Siska Construction, that if we had built the clubhouse today, it would have cost us... Double? Double. Because of material costs. So I, while $160,000 is not chump change in this instance, I'm happy to, I'm happy to agree to this and just the fact that we are still very close to what we are budgeting. The city's doing an excellent job and you all are doing an excellent job watching over our pennies. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Well, you know, when people hear about the tariffs, they don't really think about how that impacts the taxpayer because you're thinking some private entity is building some factory somewhere and it's going to affect them. But it's affecting the taxpayers now. We are, we are at, we have no choice but to accept this. Of course, we're going to accept it. We have to finish constructing the building. And we're, you know, as we go down the agenda, we're going to see how it impacts how we're budgeting for future projects in the city. So, you know, it is, it is one of those things that happens at the federal level that is impacting us here at the local level. And it's unfortunate, but it is what it is. So we can't change that, but we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about how the tennis center and the City Hall renovations is going to be impacted by that too. So thank you for the presentation.
Any other comments? Motion and a second, please?
I'll motion to move N. No, K. What was it? J. J. Forward.
A second, please.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and we have pulled the proclamation. And may we read the proclamation?
That's why I pulled the proclamation. The mayor and I had the experience of being able to go a couple of months ago when 211 held their legislators' day and actually toured the 211 facility, see how the operators and the volunteers and the staff manned the phones. And since Patricia was going to be here tonight, I thought it would be prudent to read the proclamation. Whereas many times, people need help in meeting life's basic needs, and whereas they may experience times of crisis and are not sure where to turn, 211 helpline is that central access point providing people of all walks of life the guidance and support they need. And whereas with over 104,000 requests for help last year, calls to 211 are free, confidential, 24/7, with text messaging and online chat also available. And whereas 211 also has specialized advocacy and support programs that include 211's Special Needs Helpline, 211's Help Me Grow, Catching Children's Development Delays Early, and the Elder Crisis Outreach. And whereas 211's Life Saving Sunshine Daily phone calls continue to brighten the lives of local seniors, now therefore Mayor Maria G. Marino, Mayor of the City of Palm Beach Gardens hereby proclaims February 11th to 17th as 211 Awareness Week in the City of Palm Beach Gardens, and urge all citizens to be aware that if they are overwhelmed and in crisis or just need to talk, 211 is available any time of day or night. 211 staff can also provide referrals for mental health counseling. 211 staff can also provide referrals for mental health counseling, substance abuse, healthcare, employment, food assistance, daycare, support groups, volunteering, VITA, free income tax preparation, and so much more. I urge everybody, please get the word out about this vital resource in our community. 911-211.
Thank you. Motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to move N...
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, okay.
Oh, by the way, it was National Glaucoma Month, I forgot to mention, so...
From our eye doctor.
What's next one?
I don't know.
The phone number at the office is...
All right. We are moving on to public hearings, and we do have a quasi-judicial hearing, so if anybody has, has comment cards, please fill them in now and give them to the city clerk. Ordinance 29, 2018, second reading and adoption, Arcadia Gardens rezoning. Resolution 80, 2018, Arcadia Gardens PUD site plan and major conditional use. This means that the city council is required by law to base its decisions on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testify tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations and will be permitted in the order of the witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, please fill out a card and give it to the city clerk. The city clerk will now swear in any persons who attends to offer testimony this evening on any of these cases.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you go?
Thank you. Okay. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Ordinance 1, 2019, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, Amending the City of Palm Beach Gardens Budget for the Fiscal Year Beginning October 1, 2018, and Ending September 30, 2019, Inclusive, Providing a Conflicts Clause, a Separability Clause, and Authority Codified, Providing an Effective Date and Further Purposes.
Thank you. I will open the hearing, and I believe something has changed since the first reading?
Yes, Madam Mayor. For the record, Allen Owens, Finance Administrator, and we just had one change from the first reading. Since that first reading, we, the offer to purchase the public works property was canceled, so what that means is that what we have done is deleted the anticipated $1,380,000 of additional proceeds from the budget amendment. The effect of that is to reduce the budget stabilization reserve in this year's budget from about $3.8 million to about $2.4 million. Everything else stays the same. I have a presentation if you'd like to see it, but basically, in a nutshell, that's, that's the only change. It is interesting to note that the balance in the budget stabilization of $2.4 is just virtually the same balance as when the account was established in 2011, and it's still $1.7 million more than the proposed or anticipated amount that's in the adopted 2019 budget.
Thank you. I have no comment cards, so I have no one to call to the podium. I will close the hearing. May I get a motion in a second, please?
I'll make a motion to move Ordinance 1, 2019.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. Any questions?
Well, that's why we have a budget stabilization fund, is it not right?
Correct, sir.
Thank you.
We like that.
And, and the money will be put back in the budget stabilization fund, probably once the property is sold.
When the property is sold, yes. And it's back on the market, or it will be on the market, so...
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you very much. No more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda... May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Ordinance 28, 2018, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, Adopting a Large-Scale Amendment to Its Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map in accordance with the mandates set forth in Chapter 163 Florida Statutes, specifically Section 163.3184 et sequintes Florida statutes pursuant to application number CPMA-17-08-000021 in order to change the land use designation on 11.09 acres from commercial C to residential high RH, providing a notation on the future land use map pertaining to the permitted land use density related to the subject property located on the south side of RCA Boulevard, approximately 500 feet east of alternate A1A, providing for compliance with all requirements of Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO, providing that the future land use map of the City of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a separability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes. Note to the public, there is a sign-up sheet at the front table for anyone wanting additional information from the Department of Economic Opportunity.
Thank you. I will open the hearing. Hello, Ann.
Hello, good evening. For the record, I'm Ann Booth, I'm with Urban Design Kill Day Studios, and I have been sworn in.
Has anything changed since the first reading?
There has not. We do want to thank staff for helping us get to this point. We've reviewed the conditions with the applicant, and he agrees.
Thank you. Do we need a presentation? Okay. No presentation, no comment cards, no individuals to the podium. I will close the hearing. May I have a motion in a second, please?
I move that we adopt Ordinance 28, 2018. I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. Are we, are you going to read Ordinance 29 and Resolution 80 at the same time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Onto Ordinance 29.
Ordinance 29, 2018, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, Rezoning Certain Real Property Within the Corporate Limits of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Consisting of 11.09 acres in size, more or less, and Located on the South Side of RCA Boulevard, Approximately 500 Feet East of Alternate A1A, To Be Known as the Arcadia Gardens Plan Unit Development PUD, Providing that this parcel of real property, as more particularly described herein, Shall be assigned the City's zoning designation of Plan Unit Development PUD overlay, With an underlying zoning designation of Residential High RH, Providing that the zoning map of the City of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, Providing a conflicts clause, a separability clause, and authority to codify, Providing an effective date and further purposes. Resolution 80, 2018 is a companion item to Ordinance 29, 2018, and will require council action. Resolution 80, 2018, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, Granting Site Plan and Major Conditional Use Approval for a 326-bed, 163-unit, age-restricted, 55-plus, independent-living facility. The subject site is approximately 11.09 acres, Located on the South Side of RCA Boulevard, Approximately 500 Feet East of Alternate A1A, as more particularly described herein, Providing conditions of approval, Providing waivers, Providing effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. I will open the hearing. And any ex parte's to be declared?
No.
Actually, Malcolm, you and I had a conversation a year ago, two years ago, so I will put that in the record. Anything changed since the first reading?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So we don't need a presentation, do we? Okay. So I will close the hearing. May I get a motion in a second, please?
I move we adopt Ordinance 29, 2018.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. And I will open the hearing now for Resolution 80. Any ex parte's? I guess that would be me. Close the hearing, since we have nothing to change, right?
Yes.
Okay. And may I have a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion to move Resolution 80, 2018.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, where are we now? For subjects under resolutions, please submit request form to the city clerk prior to the commencement of this agenda item, so we will go to Resolution 7. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution 7, 2019, Resolution, City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, Authorizing the City Manager to Negotiate and Execute an Agreement and All Documents Necessary with Cass Construction Company LLC for Renovations to City Hall and the Police Station, as Solicited Under Invitation to Bid Number ITB 2018-104PS Municipal Complex Renovations and Space Expansion, Construction Services, Providing an Effective Date and Further Purposes.
Thank you. May I have a staff presentation, please?
Good evening, City Council. For the record again, Kumra, Protestant and Contracts Director, and with me is Angela Brown, she's the Deputy Community Services Administrator, and also accompanying us is Merrill Romanek. She belongs, she's, she's a principal with Architective Record, Sinolovsky Romanek Say. This resolution seeks to approve or give the city manager the authority to approve the agreement for the municipal complex renovations and space expansion. As you're aware, in May of 2016, we did a space needs study and analysis that was conducted by Song and Associates, and the conclusion was that the city lacked workspace to meet, the physical workspace to meet current needs and future projected needs, and would not be able to accommodate any growth in the city and expansion of services. And so in March of 2017, as part of Ordinance 10, one of the projects underneath that was approved as part of the 1 cent sales surtax was the municipal complex renovation expansion, which included City Hall, Police Station, and the Administration Section of Fire Rescue Department. And you can see from the pictures how we currently are kind of cramped. We advertised an invitation to bid in June 2018. We got six bids. All the bids came in significantly higher than the project funding, so we met again with the architect, and the project team revised the scope, significantly revised the scope, and re-advertised under a new invitation to bid. As you can see from the tally here, we got seven responses, we got seven bids, and the firm offering the lowest price, the response, responsible bidder offering the lowest price, was Cass Construction. Cass is a well-known local company. The contract award is in the amount of $6.8 million. The city has a contract contingency, because this is a renovation, so you made your walls, you made your floors, and they're unforeseen things that you didn't plan for. So the city has a $700,000 contingency built into this award that you're approving tonight that will allow the city, if something comes up, to fund that without having to hold up the project by coming back for approval for that. So the total amount of $7.5 million is still within the project funding for this, for this project. Angela's going to come up and explain to you the specifics of the design and renovation.
Good evening. Angela Brown, Deputy Community Services Administrator. The project scope was revised to remove Fire Station 1, and, which will be addressed at a later date. Expansion of City Hall, highlighted here in blue, has remained the same at 16,900 square feet. Renovation, the renovation area highlighted in green was reduced from 30,000 square feet to 9,000 square feet. We also revised finishes and furniture selections to keep the cost down. Construction of Phase 1 will start this month and continue through next March. Phase 2 will start right after that and continue through next June. Police station renovations includes renovating just over 6,000 square feet on the second floor and enclosing the generator yard. This phase will start next January to avoid hurricane season and take advantage of some of the same trade work that's happening at City Hall. The, one exception would be the generator yard that will be done prior to the summer, before hurricane season. The estimated completion is June 2020 for this portion of the project. The contractor will be installing a temporary construction fence, outlined here in red, in mid-February. This will affect about 35 parking spaces, which are needed for equipment and material staging. Access into the site from Military Trail will remain open. However, the contractor will be closing off the exit lanes during the weekdays only and converting that into a construction access point. The barricades and fence area, highlighted here in orange, will be reopened during the weekends to allow for traffic for the green market and other recreational activities. There, while the Military Trail exit is closed during the weekdays, alternate exits can be found to the north on, sorry, on the north Johnson Derry Road and Burns Road. Access to the City Hall during construction will occur through a temporary corridor between the new expansion area here in blue and the existing building. In order to accomplish this, the existing records room will need to be demolished, and a plywood wall constructed within the corridor to protect patrons. After Phase 1 is complete, the new building lobby will serve as the main entrance into City Hall, and Phase 2 renovations are complete. Staff recommends approval as presented. Questions?
Any questions? Okay.
Okay, Angela, Fire Station Number 1 has been eliminated in its entirety from this project, is that correct?
Yes. However, we still have funding for design for future, so we do plan on proceeding with designing to what we need it to be, or is what was originally anticipated, so that, but funding for that construction will be addressed at a later date.
Okay. Also, it appears that the expansion of the CSI lab, that that was eliminated, which is a significant part of, or was a significant part of, the Police Department renovation. Can you address that a little bit?
That too will be addressed at a later date, depending on funding.
So we can always add that, the way the building's designed, that can always be added on at a later time?
Yes.
As the funding becomes available?
Yes.
All right. The other thing is the green aspects of the building. I know that you worked very hard to make sure that we could be as green as possible without spending the, the extra funding to perhaps get certified green, but can, what, did we had to, have to compromise on any of that with the cost-cutting that happened?
No. By state statute, we are required to build to a LEED or equivalent building standard, green building standard. Merrill has addressed those items, those requirements, so she's got some things that she can kind of tell you about.
Hi, Merrill Romanek, from Sinolovsky Romanek Say. Thank you for having me tonight. It's been a delight to be working with the city. We did incorporate many sustainable aspects into the project. When we build the expansion, the new structure, how it's insulated, the building envelope, the solar reflectance on the roof, the solar heat gain on the windows, the entire envelope has been looked at to make sure that we're as sustainable as we can be, so that we're not taking on more heat and having to spend more money to cool the space down. The equipment that we're including is all state-of-the-art, the, as efficient as, as can be. You know, the code has integrated a lot of technologies into it as LEED has, LEED and sustainable strategies have come into it, so every room, we have occupancy sensors, so that when it's not an occupied space, the lights will shut down, so that folks, you know, we can benefit by not spending energy we don't need. All the lighting, whether it's in the expansion or the renovation, is being converted to LED lighting. We are doing as much as we can as far as finishes with recycled contents, regional materials, as much as we can. It's a little tucked down here on the panhandle, because everybody regionally is a little bit farther away from us than most states, but we're going to try to integrate all that, low VOC paints. We're doing the best that we absolutely can to make sure that you guys get as sustainable a project as possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Rochelle?
Um, no, I think that covers it. Thank you.
Matthew?
Sure, I know, life's a balance. How did we decide what to put in, and taking out the CSI lab and the fire part of it?
Chief, would you like to answer about the prioritization between the renovation versus the expansion?
Sure. So we decided to wait on the, the renovation to fire rescue, because what we were doing was, we were moving care here to that central area, the fire rescues, so it would be more just accessible for employees. Until we move out of there, there's no reason to go ahead and start that, so when we move over to here, administration's coming over to City Hall. Will we do that? We'll have the space available to be able to do that, to move out of care here. That gives us the room at Station 63 as well.
So you're coming up?
Fire administration will be coming over to City Hall.
Mark, Carl?
What are we going to do about the cost of the materials if they go up over the next year and a half, or it's going to be skyrocketing on our other projects?
Well, we're hoping that contingency will address that, if that comes up, but right now, the prices are, at, to date, right now is dollars, I mean, the... I mean, the op center was bid a year and a half ago, a year ago, over a year and a half ago. So those prices did change since he actually, right, since the contractor enters into a contract with his subs. So it does change. So we will address those if that does happen.
So we can imagine what would have happened if we didn't get the bond. So we might be paying a little bit in the, at the end, but all these cities that are waiting 10 years and they're getting their increments over the years, their money's going to be worth zero by the time they get it.
Power $1 up front.
Yeah. So we did the right thing, and we might pay a little extra for the community in the long run, but, you know, so, thank you.
Well, the design build is basically the price that we're going to be guaranteed for the construction of the project. So it doesn't matter if there's an increase in cost, this is what it is. As one who's built commercial property contingencies and change orders is like a knife in your back, and I hope there's not a lot of them, but obviously you're going to get them, so it's good that we're adding that 700,000. 10% is about what, what is expected.
Hopefully that doesn't happen.
Hopefully it doesn't, but it will, because it will. It always does. I mean, there's always some kind of something found in a wall somewhere that you never expect, which is, which is fine. But even with that, it still falls within our budget. I just want to commend the city. You know, it's, it would have been easy to say, well, we need more money to build what we wanted, but instead of doing that, it was more of a, well, this is what we promised that we were going to spend, and this is what we're going to build. So even though it's not going to have maybe some of the amenities that we wanted, maybe we're going to have to wait on doing some other things, maybe you're not going to have a private bathroom after all, Ron, I don't know. But, but at least.
I think we're moving Max out to the parking lot, which is fine with me.
It just tells me, when, when this came about, it told me, as one that watches numbers, that, you know, you guys are being responsible and making, and not saying, hey, we need to do this, and now we need an extra $5 million because we feel like it. So it's a good thing. And we're going to hear the same story with tennis, too. So thank you.
Well, as we've said all along, the city tries to do more with less. I know we've done it with staff and, and our levels of staffing. And the way you've taken the projects out, it's easy enough to put them back in structurally. It's not going to change anything. So we are looking to the future again, and as Carl so aptly said, our, our dollars are worth a whole lot more today than they're going to be 10 years from now. So I commend the city. We are, we do have 40, what is it, 62 capital projects, $45 million or something like that? Or did I get six, 46?
46 million.
It's 62, yeah. So we are, we are in a building phase in our city, but we are building smartly and wisely, planning for the future. It's easier to plan for the future than to go backwards. So I commend you for doing this and staying within our budget dollars. And yes, we will have this conversation in the next, next phase when we talk about tennis. But I believe at this point, we've had our presentation. Bring it back for discussion. May I get a motion in a second, please?
I'll make a motion for Resolution 72019.
I'll second.
And I think we've had our discussion, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0. All right. May I have the clerk read the next resolution?
Resolution 8, 2019. Resolution, the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement and all documents necessary with Aaron's Enterprises Incorporated, DBA Aaron's Companies, for the construction of a new tennis center clubhouse, solicited under invitation to bid number ITB 2018-095RC. Construction of new tennis center clubhouse, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. Kumra, how are you?
Good evening again, City Council, Madam Mayor. With me again is, for the record, Kumra, Purchasing and Contracts Director. And with me again is Angela Brown. She's a Deputy Community Services Administrator. The background to this project is that the existing clubhouse is inadequate to meet current needs and future projected needs, only about 2,500 square feet. So in July of 2017, the city hired OLC Collaborative to design and construct a new building that would meet the current needs and the future projected needs of the tennis community. The project includes demolition of the existing clubhouse, construction of a new two-story, 14,000 square feet clubhouse, which includes a pro shop, cafe, locker rooms, multipurpose rooms, and viewing patios on both floors. We advertised a competitive invitation to bid in July of 2018. We got seven offers. All seven offers exceeded the budget. The responsive and responsible bidder who offered us the lowest price was Aaron's Companies. You can see there's $5.2 million. So we entered, since it was over budget, we entered into discussions and negotiations with Aaron's. This included value engineering discussions. And because we're value engineering the project, because we didn't want to take time to go back out and rebid it, we couldn't make any material changes to the scope of the work. We had to maintain the original intent of the design and the project vision. So we negotiated things like coming up with less expensive finishes and certainly other materials, less expensive structural elements that serve the same, the same purpose, looked at design elements. We simplified the food and beverage operations, which was like a full-fledged restaurant, into more of a cafe operation. We simplified the rear deck from multiple levels to a single level, and we negotiated price reductions for certain work, work divisions such as carpentry, electrical, HVAC, et cetera. The results of the negotiations and value engineering was that we came to not exceed price for the construction of the facility. Again, there's no material or major change. If we had done that, we'd have to go back out and redo the project. And the agreement with Aaron's Companies will incorporate all the terms in invitation to bid. None of those have changed, and all the terms and conditions of the solicitation. The not-to-exceed price is $3.9 million, and that is approximately $1.3 million less than the original bid. Again, this is a construction project. As one of the council members has pointed out, with construction, there are always these change orders and things you never projected or saw. So there's a $400,000 contract contingency the city can use to handle change orders and anything we didn't expect. The total amount of $4.3 million is still within the project budget. Angela, I'm going to explain to you the details of the design.
Good evening again. The first floor plan includes an open lobby concept with retail space incorporated in it. We have women's and men's locker rooms off to the left and the right. And as you go through the center of the facility, you'll have the front desk and the offices and pro area to the right. Towards the back of the facility, you have the café deli area with seating and dining area to the right, and then more dining and viewing out towards the back patio. So on the second floor, you have an open lobby heater. You come up the stairs, you have multipurpose rooms that are available for recreational programs and also available for rent. We have a catering prep area here and more storage, and again, more seating outside with viewing out to the courts. The contractor anticipates demolishing the existing clubhouse in mid-March with construction starting in early April. The estimated completion is March of next year. The temporary staging location is outlined here in red. The temporary pro shop and office and restrooms are located here on the north side of the, the facility. Pedestrians will access the site from the north, from the new parking lot that was recently constructed, and basically, that's about it. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you very much. I will make a motion in a second, please.
I'll make a motion to move Resolution 8, 2019.
May I have a second?
Open for discussion.
I'll second.
Thank you. I will bring it back for discussion. Questions, comments? Rochelle, you want to start?
Quick question. The kitchen prep area is on the second floor. That is intended for the meeting rooms that are on the second floor, not the café that's downstairs?
Right. It's strictly catering prep. It's not an, actually, a working or functional kitchen. It's strictly catering for the second floor area, yes.
Matthew, any questions?
Sure. It's going to cost $4 million, as you said, to build the clubhouse. And obviously, there's going to be costs to operate the facility. So I have two questions. First, what's the anticipated annual cost to operate the clubhouse? And second, what's the anticipated annual revenue that they can, that the city can expect to derive from the clubhouse?
I'll address that question, Councilman. Back in 2017, I'd requested a business plan and operational plan for the potential of having the new tennis facility. We took a look at the programming available and what we could do to expand. Basically, the bottom line is revenues exceed expenditures on operational costs. We can't recover capital costs, but on operational costs. And at this point, the projection would be somewhere in the plus range of $60,000 a year.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mike?
Okay. Carl? Mark?
Well, just in our agenda review, Charlotte, Charlotte here? Oh, there she is. You made a comment about the, the facility being available not just for tennis, but for the entire district park. That's something that I'd like to make sure that, because, because where it's located, you know, it's kind of in the middle of it all, but it's right beside the tennis. I just want to make sure our residents know that, you know, if you're dropping your kid off to soccer and you don't feel like staying outside or going home, that it's open to them to go and sit down and enjoy a drink or something.
Yes, the, the design of the facility was to work with the synergy of the whole district park. So essentially, whether you have a soccer team who wins the final match of the year and they want to host an event at the center, or if, as you say, a parent wants to come over in between a soccer tournament and they want to get lunch or a cold beverage, they'll be able to do that. The meeting rooms, we anticipate upstairs to be used as rentals, not only for tennis events, but for other things. So yes, the building is built to accommodate what we do today, build on what we do today at tennis, but also to be that center focal point of all the district parks. So yes, it's intended to be that way.
What are the hours of operation for the, for the snack bar? And, I mean, I know the tennis facility's open until, what, 10?
Yeah, it's open quite late. Actually, we, we aren't in negotiation yet. We're going to be working on the RFP to find the operator for the café. So I can't exactly say, but the idea will be is that they will be present while the facility is open. But that, that's not determined yet.
Well, I think it'll be a nice centerpiece for the whole area. I just don't, I just want to make sure everybody knows that it's not just the tennis facility, but it's for the entire region area. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of points I'd like to make. The temporary buildings are being recycled from the golf course. So that was a capital investment we made a little while back that is coming to fruition instead of having to rent. We actually saved money by purchasing and now putting them over here. So kudos for that forward-thinking. And as Mark touched on it, this is, this is our, we built our beautiful clubhouse out at Sandy Crane, not just for golfers, but for the community, and it is being used as such. There was a wedding there this weekend, and I was out at the golf course yesterday and had a long discussion with a lady who complimented the city on building such a nice clubhouse and not spending an inordinate amount of money and realizing that it, since it is the public's clubhouse, you know, finishes of granite and marble don't need to be there because that's not how we want to spend our tax dollars. So we are following that same line of thinking here at this facility and with the Gardens District Park and with the Joe Russo Park and with the soccer and the tennis and everything else that goes on. We're just giving, we have a west location and we have an east location for our residents and, and other people to enjoy the services that the city provides. So kudos to everybody for planning ahead on this, and I know this has been something we've been talking about for quite a few years. So I am all in favor, and I think we've got our second and our discussion. And any other questions? Okay.
But I'll second it.
Rochelle made the first? Yeah. And Matthew made the second? And we've had the discussion? And we're all in favor. I am, anyway. Okay. We're all in favor. So vote, vote passes. Thank you very much. So next item on the agenda is items for council action and discussion. Does anything, anyone have anything they'd like to bring up? I actually have some on mine, so. Go ahead, Mark. You, you, you look like you were ready.
Well, I, you know, we don't reuse this time very often, but since it's so early, you know, just take a few minutes and chat about a couple of things. The, the, there's a lot of discussion, a lot of talk amongst people about workforce housing in the city and what we're going to do. And I, I think it's fine that we don't know exactly what we want to do, but I'm really glad to hear that in all my conversations with people out there, that all of us independently are talking to different members of our community about what we want to do. So it's a good thing that, that all of us are kind of in that same boat of, you know, yes, we want to tackle this, but we all want to tackle it the right way. We don't want to just start spending money because we, we want to. I think it's going to be a diverse plan. When you hear about the county, and Rochelle and me, you guys are more engaged with the league and with what's happening in the county, but, you know, if you talk to the people in the county, they don't really know exactly what they want. They've got all this money and they don't know what to do with it. And, and there's still a desperate need for essential services, housing. So just because you have money to spend, they don't really know what to spend it on. And, and we need to develop a plan. And I think just in, in hearing conversations with members of the public, members within here, I think this is something that we can definitely grow on, but I don't want to just start willy-nillying it. I, I look forward to a plan that the city manager and I, and I'm sure with the rest of you, have spoken about, so we can make sure we do the right thing for the city.
Thank you.
Good idea, Mark, and I agree, and I'm looking forward to the workshop where we can actually develop some ideas.
There's a lot of failed templates out there when it comes to workforce housing, and we're not, we're not going to be another one. So we don't need to rush through this. We're going to get it right, because we will.
Well, a wise person told me that right now, it's all in the questions, and we need to come up with the questions that we need to ask before we can come up with the answers on how to go ahead and do this.
Well, it's interesting. I was at the BCC meeting when they talked about affordable housing, and they, the County Commission voted for the resolution, and the entire committee, Planning Committee, voted against the resolution. But what I also find interesting is that the county has $3 million in their affordable housing budget right now, and the county is 1.4 million people, and the city has $5.5 million, and we, we don't have it yet, we will have it, with 52,000 people. So I think the city is already on the right track, and I applaud those that have been supporting the affordable housing. I know Arcadia Gardens that have just left, and they've, they are putting into the Affordable Housing Fund. And as we've all said, this is not going to be something we do willy-nilly, that the City of Palm Beach Gardens doesn't do anything willy-nilly. So when we do come up with an affordable housing plan, I'm not going to say solution because there's too many people that need affordable housing, and we just don't have that kind of a solution, but it will be one that will be applicable quickly.
Look how much time we spent on the mothers against, or the smart gun control or whatever. We spent months on that ordinance, and we'll do the same here.
But this won't come just from us. This is going to come from experts out there.
This is going to be global. Yeah, it'll be a lot.
And, and it's really going to tie hand in hand to what happens with, you know, if and when and how the TOD develops, train station development, how that impacts the area, how people living in other parts of the county may be able to work up here. And so there's a whole list of possibilities that, that are going to come out of this conversation. I'm just glad we're all kind of thinking about it and talking about it.
I'm looking forward to the, the educational aspect of it, because it is going to be a really big education for all of us, and...
And I know we always talk about police-fire teachers, but obviously, there's a whole slew of people that make, you know, a certain dollar value that's going to be impacted by this. It's not just, you know...
We'll get it right. It's, it's, it's not a problem. It's something that's unique to our city, and I'm looking forward to the work to get it correct.
Thanks for bringing that up, Mark.
I have a couple of items. Anybody else have anything that you want to talk about?
No.
When I was in the meeting with Melissa McKinley yesterday, and FDOT did a bit of a presentation about what was going on, and we had the whole North Lake discussion, and the question that I was asked was, who's policing North Lake? So I just think that speed on North Lake is too fast. And interestingly enough, the people from the county said that they thought the speed on North Lake was just fine and that we don't need traffic lights, we don't need to slow people down, and that people, I mean, people have to die before they're going to take any action. And I think that's a horrible way to think. And I said it yesterday, I'll say it again today. I wish the county would work better with us on the traffic light situation on North Lake Boulevard. I disagree with their line of thinking, and I don't... I disagree with their line of thinking, and I don't believe that keeping traffic at a higher rate of speed on North Lake Boulevard is safe when we have communities like Bay Hill Estates and Carlton Oaks and Osprey Isles darting out of their communities to cross North Lake. And when we have the realignment of the exit from the golf course, where it will be right across from Bay Hill Estates, and that will be incorporating Ancient Tree, you know, that one point is going to be a congested point. And I hope that, and I know that the city and myself, my position on the Transportation Planning Agency as vice chair, this is a conversation that is not dead. This is a conversation that continues. And I know that city staff and I will be working to, as hard as we can, to get a traffic light at Bay Hill Estates because we have the money. The city already has the money, and we just need to get the county to see it our way.
Maria, you're describing North Lake West?
Correct.
And North Lake East has the opposite problem that the county's ignoring as well. So there's a lot of work to be done. I mean, you can't have any speed going east because you crawl. Is there any indication that there is anyone to else that we can reach out to on the commission other than Commissioner McKinley? This was strictly with McKinley?
Commissioner Malachey. And there's, we are working with both of them, and we have been speaking with county staff. And we, I brought up the fact that, you know, once West Lake comes online, that's going to be more traffic on North Lake Boulevard. So it's interesting, yes, we don't usually use this time to talk, and this is something that's so important that we do need to talk about. But we are still working, the city is working. I know staff is in constant contact with them, and I think there are just more things that we can say, and we will keep doing that.
Can I ask?
Studies are expensive. Has the thought of an independent study to kind of go against the county, or go to the county with and say, this is what our studies show versus what your studies show?
Ron, I opened the door. You've got a smile on your face. You're probably saying, why did she talk about, why is she talking about this? But we have done a study. Come on, Ron.
We've done a couple of studies with our own traffic consultant regarding attempting to obtain permission from the county to put a traffic signal there. We're currently working on another strategy that we will attempt in the very near future. And we'll keep you apprised of the progress of that different strategy. That'll be coming up soon.
Thank you. I'm not throwing the county under the bus here. They did say that we will eventually get a traffic light there. I just think eventually is not the right time.
The city's main concern, obviously, is not traffic at this point.
It's safety.
It's safety. It's the safety of the motoring public. And it's not just, you know, Bay Hill, Ancient Tree, Carlton Oaks, and Osprey, but it's also the other communities that are out there, Ibis as well. But it's also the people in the cars coming and going that don't live there. The speed on that road is high. Obviously, anyone coming into or going out of, you know, their communities are not just going to be posing a threat to themselves as they have experienced over time and continue to experience, but they will also be posing threats to those people that don't live in those communities. And those people will be providing certain dangers too. The amount of speed out there, when you start turning left, trying to get into your community as well as don't even try turning left in the morning because you can't get out anyway. So it is a dangerous situation. We're not concerned with traffic counts. That isn't our issue. That is the county's issue. They want numbers. We want to save people's lives. And so we have opposing priorities at this point. We're going to continue to attempt to work with the county and see if we can get them to help us out with the safety aspect more so than volume.
So to clarify, Ron, it's not, it's not a matter of when, if, but when. We know that it's going to be needed at some point. There's no question that there's going to need to be a light there amongst other lights that are going to come along North Lake Boulevard. I know their traffic counts are about, you know, various things that are not future seeing, I suppose, or foresight isn't really the criteria when you're discussing this particular area in North Lake. What other, what other ways can we communicate with Karen? Because everybody asks, when you go around and ask people in the city what concerns them, it's traffic on North Lake is always a big thing, workforce housing, and there's a couple of other items, too. You know, military trails, speeding on military trail, which we were able to hopefully address a little bit with the grant. But, you know, there's got to be, sometimes you have to put aside numbers and just look at common sense and say, well, this is going to be needed. It's going to come down the pike. We have, we have, right. So is there any way?
That is our position.
Funding is already, the funding is already in place. Is there anything we, as a council or our residents, can do to help out? And that's my question.
Write letters to the county commission. Everybody who lives on North Lake, travels on North Lake, uses the golf course, crosses that road, go ahead and write a letter to Melissa McKinley and to Hal Valachay and to David Ricks, and let them know of your concerns.
Can we get Osprey to start generating their own petition? Have them present it to us? Even if they bring over hundreds?
Osprey can, Carlton Oaks can, Bay Hill can, Ibis can.
That's a good idea. And we're out there, and we speak at these communities on a regular basis. It's important to get the word out to them that this is what they need to do.
We can stand together as a council and go to the county, all five of us, with Osprey, and stand up for what we need done in our city. Because what's going to happen as the traffic cop, because I know this stuff, the new people that are going to move into Ancient Tree, everybody else who lives in, off North Lake, they've become accustomed to the traffic. And so they're familiar with the road, they're familiar with the speed. But the people that are going to be moving into Ancient Tree, they're going to be new to the area. They're not going to be able to navigate what somebody seventy miles an hour, as they're approaching, that car is going to be farther away when they see it. It's going to be moving much faster than what they're used to. They're not used to the traffic patterns on North Lake like the people are now.
It's like Brightline.
It's like Brightline. So if we can get, if, like we've always done, the few years we've been working together, is stay ahead of this and be proactive on it now, maybe by the time that the signal needs to go in for Ancient Tree, we can be ahead of it.
We have to keep beating the drums.
So I'm on board with doing whatever we need to make sure that community gets a signal, even if we have to go to the county meetings ourselves and do our three minutes along with the other hundred people behind us, so someone doesn't get wiped out, because that's what's going to, that's the number they're waiting for. They're waiting for number one, who gets killed. Then they'll think about a light. That's the number they're waiting for.
I think we need to wait, though, like Ron said, for, for something to move and for some, for us to be able to go to county, there has to be something there between.
A death.
Well.
No, no. Like, as you said, he's got something.
No, a plan, a plan, a plan from the city manager first before we can go to the county commission to support it.
Agreed. Yeah, we'll do it in the proper steps. But, you know, the petition from Osprey's will help, and we'll stand behind him, and we'll stand behind Ron and his ideas, and once we need to hit the pavement, we will.
This is a constant discussion with NCNC also. So, you know, we, we have the, we have the people, and we'll let Ron work on what he's got working on.
We'll let Ron be Ron.
And then we will continue. But I thought it was, while it is a sore topic, I think it's one that's worthy of having.
It's not a sore topic. It's something we need to get done. And you know what? Usually, the council discussion is quick, but we've got a couple very important things.
Yes.
Well, that's right. Yeah, that's right. We don't have to get out of here.
Ron, anything else?
I would just like, thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to exhaust all measures, trying to work this out with, at the staff level before, you know, continuing with any other strategy. So if you give me a little bit of time to where I can complete some information we're currently working on, approach the county perhaps one more time, and see if they can't help us cooperate and collaborate a cooperative decision on this issue. And give me some, a little bit of time, and I'll try one more time.
Absolutely. All right. Anybody have anything else they'd like to talk about?
Nice picture, David. Very nice. Second book magazine, and I love reading it when it comes out.
City Attorney Report.
I just have two very brief things for you. We're still, I reported to you at our last, well, actually, I didn't. You, I think you're aware of now, I provided you all an email, that we, the Fourth District Court of Appeal ruled in our favor with regard to the challenge to ordinance twenty-eight, which was the three-year hiatus. The appellate, time we filed a motion for rehearing and motion for rehearing en banc, and we're awaiting the court's ruling on that. I don't really want to handicap what they do, but they're not commonly granted, but we'll see. And then this Monday, this coming Monday, the eleventh, in the second, in Dinerstein two, if you will, the challenge to the, not what evolved into a challenge to the ballot, the referendum question that passed, which was the major amendment to our charter. We have a motion for summary judgment that's scheduled for this Monday at eleven AM, and so we'll be preparing for that tomorrow, finishing up our preparations for that. And I'll let you know the next.
Let me question that.
When we find out what happens.
Let me question that. If I'm understanding this correctly, they're challenging the judge's decision that they ruled on it, and now they want to go back in front of the same judges and question their judgment?
Correct. In Dinerstein one, yes, if you will, in the three-year sit out, yes. We prevailed at the Fourth District Court of Appeal. We had a oral argument on January fifteenth, as I explained to all of you in the email. The court issued their procuriam affirmed, which is basically a no-opinion opinion. It's saying, yes, we agree with the trial court. They issued it in less than forty-eight hours, which is honestly the fastest turnaround I've ever seen. And then the appellate filed a motion for rehearing and a motion for rehearing en banc. A motion for rehearing en banc is asking for the entire panel of all nine judges to rehear it. There are different standards for each of those two hearings, either one of which are that frequently granted, but we'll see.
Max, is it appropriate to ask how much this has already cost the city?
I think, Ron, how much has it already cost the city?
At the last count, the Dinerstein issues, it's in excess of seventy thousand dollars. And there have been additional charges since then, but I don't have those in front of me.
And that's all I really have. And as soon as I find out anything with regard to the motion for summary judgment or the decision on the rehearing, I'll make sure that you all know.
Any other questions for the attorney? Hearing none. I will adjourn this meeting at eight forty. Thank you very much.